November special.
Are we all up?
Yeah.
All muted, all?
Whoever's Samsung Galaxy, we do not have a name if you could, oh, there it's Jill, I believe it is.
Is it Jill?
Yeah, looks like Jill. Okay.
Good?
Yep.
All right. Very good. So, no worries. We'll go ahead and call this special meeting, Marion County Board of Supervisors to order. We'll do a call of order for the Board of Supervisors. I'll pass it to Mayor Hatch and he will do a call to order for Knoxville City Council. So, roll call.
Keisha Johnner.
Here.
Mark Ramey.
Here.
Steve McCombs.
Here.
Very good. Mayor Hatch.
Thank you. Yeah, we will call our council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Senator.
Here.
Donna.
Yes, here.
Horace.
Here.
Tom.
Here.
Dionne.
Here.
Okay. All here, I'll pass it back over to you, Mark.
All right, very good, thank you. Next, we have to approve our agenda for this special meeting of Marion County Board of Supervisors. The agenda item is continued discussions with Knoxville on the Veterans Administration District. Is there a motion to approve?
I make that motion to approve.
Second.
McCombs.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnny.
Hi.
Very good. Do you do an agenda approval, Brian?
Nope, you're fine, go ahead.
All right, very good. Well, so just want to thank everybody for joining us. Hopefully, technology works and everybody can hear and get all the right. If you have comments and everything, we'll try to leave a little bit of a lag so people get a chance to respond if we don't catch you lighting up on the board. But again, thank you for the opportunity to get together and meet and continue to talk about the VA. A couple of things I'd like to start off with, I know that Brian will have some comments on this as well. We're just very excited about where we're at in the project. From a contractual standpoint, if you recall, we had some items we needed to complete that were part of the conditions of acquisition from General Services. Some of those items were working on Buildings 27 and 28 through an RFP process. We had archaeological things we had to get done and some other assorted items. I'm happy to report from a Board of Supervisor perspective that the RFP process on 27 and 28 is completed. We fulfilled that contract obligation. We have sign off from Chipo, our state partners, that that is completed. From a contractual perspective, we did not select any of the applicants that submitted financials and looked at the buildings. Want to thank Chris Nestaby and our Facilities Department for showing people through those structures. But none of them seemed to fit. They all needed some type of financing. Mainly, we would have to relinquish some of the brownfield tax credits that we might want to use for development of that property. And we did not feel that that was something we wanted to do. Felt that could be better utilized in other ways. So, from that perspective, we've met that obligation. Mayor Hatch, is anything you want to add to that?
No, I think you covered it. Yeah, we've checked all the boxes. I think that we've all discussed with the Board and Council throughout the past six months or so. Ready to kind of turn the page here and start the next chapter in the planning phase. So that's exciting.
Yeah, excellent. So, the purpose of the meeting tonight is to go through several items. I'll just run down a high-level agenda here and we'll try to get through these. Again, we want to make sure we leave enough time for any discussion that we need to have. First, Aaron is going to have a financial presentation from the city of Knoxville. If you recall, one of the items we raised in our last meeting was Knoxville's ability to develop the property once the County Board of Supervisors goes through the demolition and salvage phase. So, our commitment from a Marion County perspective has been twofold. Number one, to acquire the property, assist with the items we just referred to, and then demo the property leveraging our balance sheet to do that. But then after that, the city of Knoxville has to be able to put in infrastructure. So, I was very pleased to have a discussion with Dylan and Brian and Aaron on this. I think they've got a great presentation put together on this. I'm very excited about that. Next item, we've got Confluence, I think. Is Denise on here somewhere?
Yes, right there.
There she is.
Yep, I'm here.
All right, there's Denise. We asked Confluence to do a high-level, for lack of a better term, of revenue analysis of each of the three Confluence proposals that everybody in this group and some other groups have taken a look at. So, we'll discuss that, we'll take a look at that. I think it's good, from a high-level perspective, just to get an idea of what the potential tax revenue coming off of these. So, any decisions that are made can be also, we can take into account the cash flow that comes off of these various proposals. We have Michael Maloney, who is working with Marion County on our Pella project. He'll be working with us on the VA project from a bond perspective, from DA Davidson. Phenomenal resource for us and I'll have Michael comment on some of those things when we get to that item. Michael, thank you for joining us again this evening. And so then the last item will be the discussion of those three proposals. And where do we want to go from there? And I think that'll be a full night or late evening. So with that, Brian, Mayor Hatch, Aaron, I'm going to turn it over to you and talk about financial development wherewithal for the city of Knoxville.
Chairman Ramey, thank you. I will try and share my screen. While I'm a Zoom veteran, I am a novice at this part, so bear with me.
That's all right.
Can everybody see a PowerPoint slide with me?
Look at that.
Yep.
Look at that, you're hired.
First try, okay. So, we're off and running. So, I plan to speak just very briefly. I think there are other weightier matters to discuss tonight. So, my intent is to be relatively quick with this. But do stop me if you have any questions. I just want to talk quickly about economic development and the city's role, as Chairman Ramey specifically touched on, some of the financing options that the city of Knoxville is pursuing and think would be in the community's best interest to help fund some of that infrastructure development.
Oh, boy.
How can I get to advanced? Well, it's, okay, there we go. Three things I'd like to touch on tonight, which are really momentum, preparation, and execution of a plan. So, from a momentum standpoint, I've said it to the year 2014, the year that I came to Knoxville. We've done about 12 and a half million in residential valuation that has been added to the tax rolls over those six years. About 55 and a half million from the commercial and industrial category. And I think that's important because when you look at the six years of 2014 to today versus the six years that came before that, both of those represent more than tripling the valuation that was added for that 2007-2013 timeframe. And so, we feel Knoxville has grown, if not necessarily in population, through our valuation, that we have started to build momentum for this community. And we see that especially in the employment. Across Marion County, pre-COVID, we were at an unemployment rate of about 1.6. And Knoxville is very much a part of that. We've seen significant jobs added at Wyler, which is the aerial view of that building there, that is Wyler. 3M with multiple expansions. Our hospital is gearing up for another expansion and has added employees. Our school district, Hormel, all of them, all of our major employers have added. And we've seen the valuations that have come with that. As a community, we've tried to be prepared to welcome these folks by working on amenities. You can see the new tennis courts. These are across the street from our high school. We've worked on trails. We've worked in our parks. We've doubled the square footage of our library and even added a park in the community. But amenities aren't the only thing that's important to getting people to the community. We also have to have infrastructure in place. And so, we've worked on bringing high-speed internet by partnering with Wisco. We've made significant improvements to our sanitary system and plant to keep it viable and to make sure it has plenty of capacity for moving forward. We also completed a streetscape that has helped keep our downtown vibrant and viable. We are working from a 10-year streets program that we're about halfway through. We're working with Snyder and Associates to make sure that now that we're five years into that program, we're working on the streets that need it most. We continue to plan to be aggressive on street development improvement. I've got a picture here of the Knoxville Airport. This is pre-construction. I don't have an aerial view yet since the work that's been done out there. But about 5 million invested this summer in redoing that runway. We've completed major renovations to our sidewalks and started a stormwater utility. We've also taken on some initiatives to try and improve the community through Operation Clean Sweep, where our code enforcement folks have visited every property in the city to try and help get people on the right path if some guidance is needed. We have a rental inspection program that we anticipate starting July 1, 2021. We've also recently implemented commercial development guidelines that will help raise the standard, especially aesthetically, of commercial development as it happens here in our community. As far as execution, we, as a city, feel ready to take the torch from this plan at Confluence that we'll be discussing here this evening. We've really worked on our partnerships and especially with KEDC. We do anticipate bringing in somebody who will serve as an economic development specialist. And that's an ongoing conversation, as recently as earlier, yesterday, I guess it was. And so, we feel confident that as a city, we are prepared to execute plans and programs that'll help us succeed, work with the plan that's coming from Confluence, and be successful moving this forward. So, let's talk about what I think is actually the most important part of this presentation, which is the city's financial ability to be partners with Marion County. We have existing urban renewal areas that will allow us to collect and dedicate funds for the VA. And I think what's critical to this is we'll be able to do that without needing to raise taxes on the property owners within the TIF or the property owners throughout the city or even Marion County. There will be no property tax increase for these funds, for anyone. We have just under 3/4 million dollars on hand right in this moment, ready to invest. And that number is growing daily. We do have projections that by 2023, we will be at about 2.3 million. We also have significant relief coming in our debt capacity in that 2023. So, if a bond ever is needed, we do have a lot more breathing room starting in 2023. We also have the ability to leverage up to 900,000 in sponsored projects. This would be through borrowings we have planned through the State Revolving Loan Fund. This is a fund specifically dedicated for wastewater systems. We do have significant upgrades to make to our plant, our super plant. But we're able to leverage sponsored projects to recoup a lot of that money back. And those funds can be used to make improvements of a stormwater nature within the VA campus. And we anticipate there will be significant investment needed there. So, that's saying a lot in a short period of time and a picture can be worth a thousand words. So, I did try and chart that. So, your red bars represent the surplus of TIF funds that we anticipate that flow into a balance represented by the green line. You see, we gained relatively quickly between 2019 and into 2023, which is why I sort of chose that year as our point. 2024 is basically a flat year. We actually have more obligations that year and we'll have to draw down the balance just a little. And then we have a slower but steady climb into the future of funds that can be available for us to continue to support the VA. But I think that 2023 window is really the critical one, as I mentioned. If we find that we need to go beyond the 2.3 that we're raising from those urban renewal areas, beyond the 900,000 we anticipate through sponsored projects and other sources that we have available, we do have that debt option if we need to go there. And so, our other expectation is that by 2023, we'll have seen some progress and the property will start to see a broadening of our tax base and some positive flow of revenue off the property itself. So with that, again, I didn't want to take a whole lot of time tonight. So, I am moving relatively quickly, but I'm happy to take any questions. I'm going to stop talking and give everybody a chance while I catch a breath.
Aaron, just to bring me, this is Steve, just to bring me up to speed. Why, how does your debt capacity, available debt capacity increase in 2023? What's the impetus behind that? How does that, how does that work? Are you paying something off or?
Yeah, that's exactly right, Steve. Perfect question. And yes, we will be retiring some debts and that will clear up some space for us. Exactly.
Okay.
And, you know, a good segue off of that question, Steve, I want to emphasize that these projections, we consider very conservative. And so, the numbers you see in front of you on the chart in front of you assume literally a zero growth in valuation across. Well, you can see my chart goes out to 2033. We certainly hope we experience some increase in valuation over the next 13 years. So, again, we try to be very conservative.
Physically, if you're going to be physically sound, I think you have to be very conservative, you know, with your estimates like that because that way you don't get yourself in a bind.
That's certainly our philosophy. I agree 100%.
Very good. Keisha?
I'm just calculating in my head. So, what's your projection here by 2023? Yeah, it's the two-point?
Aaron, maybe go back to the previous slide if you could. I think that one has all that math on there.
You bet. So, by 2023, again, just from those urban renewal areas, we anticipate about 2.3 million. And there are other sources we think we'll be able to leverage beside that, but that would be one of our more significant sources there.
So, the 728 is included in the 2.3?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, it looks very promising, Aaron.
Yeah, we certainly think so.
From my perspective, to the Board of Supervisors, but also to the City Council, one of the reasons, and Aaron, thank you for putting all this together. I know we've had a lot of discussions, just you and me and Brian and Dylan have had a lot of discussions about this issue. We know from a timeline perspective, given what we have to do yet as a Board of Supervisor to execute on debt financing for demolition of the property, we're into 2021 already with that and probably throughout the entirety of all of next year and maybe even into 2022. So, what becomes very critical about the timeline that Aaron has put together is that it gives Knoxville time then to continue to build up those funds, which that was from just a, to understand that when we do make that handoff, you're ready to go or you have funds available to be ready to go.
I find it interesting, or excuse me, Mark.
Yeah, go ahead.
That you say you're utilizing existing urban renewal to collect VA dedicated funds, correct?
That's right.
Okay, well, without raising taxes. So, I'm just, I'm going to point out to the elephant in the room here because people have already voted on the school bond. So, their taxes are going to raise there. Am I correct?
Well, that's already probably been implemented, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah, that's correct. The bond associated with the schools will represent a property tax increase.
Okay. To me, you know, it would be a hard pill to swallow taxing on the VA hand the school. You know, I'm just saying it because everybody would be thinking that anyway. But if you do it without taxes, then I think that's an easier pill to swallow for the taxpayers.
Yeah, Steve, I think a couple of things to that. Number one, I absolutely agree that stacking new project upon new project upon new project is going to be tough in this environment, especially with, we don't want to be. Valuation growth is a good thing. Valuation growth with a static population can be a bad thing, which is what we're seeing right now in Marion County. That's why we're doing the project in Pella. That's why we're doing this project in Knoxville. We want to broaden, we want to broaden the tax base.
You're doing, you being a good girl?
I don't know who that is. But we want to broaden the tax base and that's the goal, is to broaden the tax base so that those impacts are not as, they're spread out over a larger population base, so.
Yeah, we're 100% in agreement, Mark and Steve, with everything you said. You know, I think the hope here is by leveraging the funds, we are, we're not adding to that burden on people. And then again, by 2023, hopefully, there's some rooftops raised and not only is the VA starting to help itself, but as we fill those rooftops, we're actually lightening the load on folks in the school district as well, that they'll have a slightly smaller portion of that $26 million bond.
Yeah, absolutely. And Aaron, we've done that analysis on our Pella project. As a matter of fact, we talked about that this morning, that as development comes into that project, the actual cost of that project goes down because of those rooftops. So, that's exactly the same strategy here.
I just hope that everybody understands, the City Council, and I think everybody does, but, you know, we've kind of stuck our necks out for the rest of the county and hopefully, the rest of the county can see that this is a benefit for everybody countywide if there's development in Pella and Knoxville. And, you know, because you're going to hear a lot of, probably a lot of complaints that, well, it does nothing for me. But actually, it does. It will in the long run. I hope everybody understands that.
Good points, Steve.
If nothing else, I will give the screen back and we can proceed. Unless there's any other last questions, I'll make maybe a last call here.
Yeah, Knoxville, any questions on this? Or Brian, anything from your council?
Yeah, I'll open it up to council if they have any questions or comments.
This is a bit of an unfair question to ask without any advance warning. But do we know right now, what is the county's annual debt obligation with the outstanding balance on the jail facility? Do we know what those payments add up to?
We do. Michael?
Did we pay that off?
No, we have not been able to. But Michael, maybe very quickly describe our total debt obligation inclusive of what we just did for Pella and our total borrowing capacity.
Yeah, that's a good note. The jail piece has been refinanced previously and is still outstanding in the 2012 final payment structure. There's three more years of payments, so we're wrapping up fiscal '21. It'll be paid through fiscal '24. And the payments on that portion are approximately about $365,000 to $370,000 a year. The last year of payments was slightly less than that. The issue that was completed today and finalized for pricing is approximately, oh, let me grab the latest, $375,000 to $380,000 a year are the payments on the Pella workforce housing piece, and that is a 15-year amortization. So, those are the two items. Right now, the combined total of those is about $6 million. $6,555,000 to be exact on the two issues. And those are the only long-term debt issues of the county at this time.
Yeah, and then, Michael, we also, just for full disclosure, that's on about a base of what, 140-ish, 140 million or so?
That's correct. Yep, 141.
Yep, and we.
Michael, can you say that number again? 6 million?
6,555,000.
So, we went through a bond process, Dylan, that you have to go through for issuing the bonds. Michael walked us through there and we received a Moody's rating back. Michael, maybe very quickly, talk about the bond rating for the county and its categorization.
Yep, the county's rating was AA3 from Moody's Investors Service. It's one of the three major rating firms. That's the fourth highest rating on a national scale. Really, anything that the county could control is effectively maxed out. The limitation there is truly based on tax base. While approaching $3 billion of valuation is particularly strong for Iowa municipalities on a national scale, that's obviously on the smaller side for the AA rating category. So, well, a favorable result, keep in mind that's on a national scale as well.
So, sitting in a very good position then when we start the VA funding process as well, both on an interest, from an interest rate standpoint and from a rating standpoint. So, the county has a very strong balance sheet with those comments.
Are we assuming a 20-year amortization on the big bulk of the VA debt, assuming that's?
Probably 15.
15 to 15 million dollars?
Probably 15, yeah. Yeah, unless Michael can somehow tell me that 20 works, but I think most of our stuff has been 15, correct, Michael?
Yeah, I keep trying, Mark. I always give you the 20-year option, but you always default to that 15 for some reason, so.
For some reason, I don't know what it is. So, all right, very good. Any other, so if no other questions on that, Dylan, anything else on that for you?
I'm good. That was very thorough. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Aaron, thank you for that presentation. Appreciate it very much. I've got Denise Hert from Confluence on. I think Denise, you're the only team member on tonight. Is that correct?
Yep, unfortunately, you're stuck with me.
That's all right. It's all right. But based on the three broad proposals for the VA property, I'd gone back and asked the team, Matt and Denise, to get with some of their finance people and just give us an idea of what each of those represents from a tax-based perspective. So, I thought as we're making decisions about development, we should get at least a high level. And this is not going to be an exact science and Denise is going to talk from a very high level on this. What each of those would be in terms of revenue? I think it's important for us, when we make these decisions, to understand those and go from there. So, Denise, if you wouldn't mind just high-level walking us through there. I did send these proposals to Michael as well. So, Michael, anything you want to add from your expertise, I'd sure appreciate that as well to add some extra color to that. So, Denise, if you don't mind, take that away and run through those.
Yeah, no problem. Do you mind if I share my screen?
Absolutely. Love it. Thank you.
So, when we say high level, share, this is something that's a bit foreign to me. We do have an expert team. Unfortunately, they are up in I.C. Sioux Falls, Sioux Center, one of the Souls this afternoon, so they're not able to talk to us. But when I talked to Chris Shires, is his name this morning, he said, you know, Aaron, I bet he'd probably be able to field questions pretty well, too. So, the kind of lessons learned that Chris shared with me to pass along to all of you is the purpose of this exercise is not to be necessarily spot-on. It's to provide ballpark numbers and to provide numbers that are comparable apples to apples, meaning applying the same methodology to each of the three concepts. So, with that, he kind of explained that what he did to assume some of these values is to use a little bit of what he was able to find for local examples that were relevant to Knoxville, but also filling in some of the blanks, just given his years of experience and knowledge of the larger state of Iowa. So, that's kind of what this first page did, was it outlined some of his assumptions and where those numbers came from. And then he moved into a taxable value estimate for each of the three concepts. Aaron, would you guide me perhaps towards which numbers of this would be most important to point out, whether it's estimated taxable value or total annual TIF revenue?
Oh, yeah, so I think what's most important here would probably be the estimated taxable value, if we're trying to keep it simple, because that's what you, I don't know why I'm doing this. Michael, Michael is much more involved by the deal. So, Michael, I'll go and then Michael can correct. But that's what you're going to apply your tax rate against, correct, Michael? Because that's applied the rule back. That's, he's nodding, so I can feel much better. But yes, that is probably the most germane column to our discussion tonight. Yeah.
It's a team effort tonight when we're missing our. It's a team effort tonight when we're missing our, our valuable team member. But so the three, just to kind of flip through, concept one landed then at about $66 million, concept two at about $62 million, and concept three at just shy of $50 million. So they're relatively all in the same ballpark. There's not one that screams to be better than the others, but there's some minute differences there, so.
So, and I'll just, I'll jump in here. Then Michael, I'd like maybe just if you wouldn't mind commenting on this just briefly, when we think about it from a bonding perspective and just the different things we have to do. Assumptions, they're, the assumptions are a constant. We're using 2019 state rollbacks. So keep that in mind, that the legislature can change rollbacks, okay? So Confluence is doing their best estimate based on those 2019 rollback numbers. And then when we think about just, and I said this in the last meeting and I stand by it for Knoxville and, and of course for you all, you have to make your choices here. The actual estimated taxable value, the total pot of dollars that can flow off of any development, there can be reasons to pick one that is in the 40s. And I think if you look at item, or concept three, it's at 49.6. That does not automatically exclude that, okay? If there are things from a Knoxville perspective, when you look at the design, the concept, and obviously even within that, it could change. But if that's something that fits within the context of what you want for your community, it's not that the board's saying, hey, you've got to pick the highest dollar amount and go with that, all right? So we, I just want full disclosure on that. Pick the one that's best for your community. And then we'll, we'll work with taxable issues off of that. All of these are considerable increases to the tax base. And that's what's important. And then when you think about the additive effects, this is just, this is just talking about the potential for those developments, but the additive effects of more people, more M2 flowing around Knoxville, more businesses coming in. That's not even calculated here. So you have to think it's, you know, whatever that taxable value is plus whatever comes off of that. That's a good thing. That development spurs development. Now, Michael, anything you want to add as you, I, I know I hit you with this last or just recently, so.
Yeah, I, I think the, the county board will be used to hearing this from me, but two, two things here. One, you know, whenever we're talking about potential TIF, TIF is all about delayed gratification, right? We're, we're putting in infrastructure to create development, which will hit the tax rolls eventually and be received by the county, city, et cetera, other tax bases in the future. So that means there is a delay between the time of incurring debt for the infrastructure and then realizing the new valuation growth. And that timing is where there's always going to be some level of uncertainty, right? And we can work to manage that through agreements. But at the end of the day, you need to value, you need to have some skin in the game waiting on this development. So there's that timing piece to this that's the biggest factor. The, the revenue at full belt buildout is a good statistic. I appreciate where Mark's coming from for, hey, the different versions may have different benefits to the community. They may also, and, and I, I'm not the expert in this part, have different considerations on how rapidly it's realistic to assume that valuation hits the tax rolls. So the timing of that being realized is another factor. I know that's not what's trying to be captured here, but that's part of the mix and matching as you look at these scenarios to be thinking about as well. Mark, am I hitting any of the right points there? Am I, anything I'm maybe leaving out from our discussions on this over the last year or so?
No, excellent, excellent, excellent commentary, Michael, on that. I think that is important to understand that we always have a timing lag between what we're doing and the receipt of dollars, the receipt of revenue. And that, that's important to remember as you go through your analysis on this. So excellent comment, Michael, as always.
And, and that's why Adam, and that's why Adam's, or Aaron's presentation was so strong, right? Because with what Knoxville's done and has some history and has other TIF obligations, it's not operating in a vacuum. It's citywide, that's what they've created to be able to deploy. And I think that's the key here is, once you get the cycle of growth rolling, you can build on that growth. You're not working flat, from a flat-footed start.
Yeah.
I'll be quiet.
No, I think, and Michael, that's great. And our, our goal as a board, and I know this has been an objective for Knoxville as well, is not to have a lag. When we say lag, once we start, we want to keep going. I think, Michael, that's kind of what you're saying too. We just want to be able to keep going. We go from acquisition, we've spent a year now working on that piece, securing the property, getting it ready, going through our contract obligations. Now we're getting to that place where we kick off demolition and development. And we just want to be able to keep going. So the Knoxville presentation, extremely strong in that regard. So, very good, thank you. Denise, I'm going to let you off the hook just for a minute here before I get down and have you explain column four, line item six.
Perfect.
I'm kidding. But any questions from Steve, Keisha, the board? Brian, your group, Knoxville City Council? Any, any questions on this, again, high level, just to give us an idea of revenue coming off of these concepts?
I guess I'm curious as to what, what concept everybody's leaning toward and what is it they're trying, what, what is it we're trying to realize out there? I'm interested in what everybody's thoughts are on that.
Is there going to be any visuals at all in this or is this just this?
Denise, did you, did you also include the concepts that you can share?
I didn't, but if you give me a minute or two, I bet I can find them.
Okay.
That'd be great.
That would be fantastic.
So I'd be happy to kick in just my thoughts at a high level here. We just got the taxable value estimates here today. So this afternoon is the first time I got to sit down with those and look at how many units, what our TIF revenue would be, how many parcel acres. So to get the numbers behind each development plan, this afternoon is the first time I've had a chance to see those. And, and I appreciate Mark's input in that plan number three, well, yes, it's a, you know, a, a smaller revenue stream. It also offers some different items. So I can't say that I have a place that I'm landing quite yet because we just got these numbers. And to me, the numbers are equally as important as the concept pictures and information.
No, that's fair comment, Megan. Thank you, thank you.
All right, are you guys able to see the concepts on your screen?
I, I, I am. Knoxville, can you see those as well? Brian, can you see that?
Yes, we can see them. Yep, I think everyone can see them. I, I think Steve, maybe to, to try to help answer that question a little bit. One, I will start with a compliment to Confluence. I, I think all three concepts are excellent. I, I don't know if I would argue any of the three if, if somebody felt strongly about one. I, I like them all. But I think for us, it is kind of like what Mark had mentioned before, that best fit or feel for the community. And what, what kind of goes with the, what we're thinking as far as our future growth? Does it involve schools? Is it more multifamily housing, row housing? Is there more mixed use or commercial? So all those things to take into account of where we see this area moving in the future and what do we feel like is that best fit? I think that's, along with the financials, kind of as, as a side piece, is the direction that we all need to go.
Brian, do you feel that we have to come, that you would have to decide on a concept before you could place your infrastructure or does that matter?
Yeah, I definitely think at some point here we're going to have to come up with a concept, especially for, again, I'm not going to pretend to be the expert on it, but when we start talking about the streets and infrastructure, things like that. So I think from, from a high level, we'll have to have some sort of a, a concept layout as far as the roads and where we think that's going to be. There's some of those higher level things that maybe could change in there over time. But I think, yeah, some sort of a concept moving forward at some point here will be important, yes.
I agree.
One, one of the things that just, and for, again, for Knoxville, for you to consider as you go through this process, from a board standpoint, we will, now that we're wrapping up our discussions regarding Prairie Ridge, we've gone through the, we've still got some agreements, I believe, Michael, that we've got to get done, those types of things. But once that process is complete, it is my intent to bring to the board the next step, which is the analysis and the bond process for the VA. So there is some time here to think about the numbers, think about these proposals, think about the community fit. And even after that, there's still some time. So it's not like you've got to just snap it and make your choices. Everything that we've done here with Confluence, from the numbers to the, to this, is really to give all of us a sense of the potential of this piece, of this piece property for the city of Knoxville and for Marion County. That's what this is. So we want, especially for you, Knoxville City Council, and, and the residents to make sure that it is the right choice for your community as it grows and adds value, not just to Knoxville, but for all of Marion County. So there is time to think about those things, process that information.
Yeah, Mark, that.
I was going to say, we as a board, we've got, we will start making our action steps on the demolition side. So we're ready in the spring. I think as, just, and I'm giving you kind of a broad timeline here, but I think we would like to be ready early spring to get started on our end of the project. And Michael and I have a lot of conversations yet for, for those items that have to get done and be presented to the board supervisors.
I think, I think what Mark said is very important and I totally agree with it. Whatever concept is used, it ha, it has to fit what, what you guys feel is going to be successful for Knoxville. I'm not opposed to any of them. And I, you know, like the numbers, you know, Megan, the numbers are important, but it's also what, what has to fit. But you know, I, I'm kind of leading that up to you guys, what you think's going to work for you.
Could we show the next concept?
Yeah, Denise, could you scroll to the next concept maybe and?
Yep.
Yeah, Mark, I'm glad you mentioned, I think that was a great point when you mentioned not having to make a decision. I hope that's not the, the intent of, of us, you know, when we met was, for this meeting tonight was to have them make a decision tonight on the spot. There's a lot of information, a lot of great information. And, and like you said, we do have time. There's lots of things on, on your end, you know, that you, you guys have plenty of time to work on those things. So they're going to have, we're going to have time to put our, our heads together and come up with our concept. And in the meantime, we've also, we've got, between the city and the county, we've talked about an agreement to put in place, you know, before we kind of officially pass that, that torch on to, to council with the decision. So, yeah, I, I don't want to put pressure on council that they feel like they have to make a decision tonight. So there's, there's plenty of time for us to think this one through.
Yeah, I don't think that's the intent.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
Good. Did you want to see the next one, Keisha?
Yeah, who could, yeah.
Denise, yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Is it possible for council to be able to get these concepts so that we've got time to, to look at them, you know, form some kind of an opinion on, on what, what looks best?
You should have them. We sent up the presentation right after we came down and did that kind of day-long group meetings. I think maybe the following week we sent out concepts to everybody.
My bad.
No problem.
So, John, if we need to reset.
We can definitely share those, John. Aaron, Aaron, we, we have those and we can definitely share them again if you missed the email. So that, we'll, we'll get those to you, no problem. Yeah, you definitely want to take a look at them a little closer.
I, I think you need to look at.
Those are $9.9.
I think whatever, whatever concept you guys look at, it's not only the VA campus I would, you, you need to consider, you need to consider the flow of the, of the surrounding area and how this, and how you're going to do traffic with your, with your existing facilities that, that surround the VA. So you need to keep that in mind when you pick a concept, because the, the surrounding area has to work into it.
Good point, Steve. Yes, thank you. That's good.
Okay. Well, that's about all I have, I have. Brian, do you have anything else you or the council want to discuss this evening? And then we'll, then we'll kind of outline some next steps.
Yeah, I, I don't have a lot, I guess, to add that nobody else, or that anyone else hasn't already said. I just, I just want to say thank you, I guess, to, to everyone for the information. I know Aaron had worked hard putting that together. Frank, equally, you guys had all the information there. I think everyone, Confluence and also included, has done a great job of setting up this information for us in order to give council the opportunity to make a good educated decision. So I just want to say thank you to everyone for, I guess, setting the table for us here and getting ready to make this transition.
Yeah, Brian, and I'd like to thank you guys also. I feel a lot more comfortable sticking my neck out knowing you guys are going to be able to swing it.
The execution part, yes.
We know it's, we know it's a huge move for the city of Knoxville, for Marion County as a whole. It's something that we've been planning for and looking forward to for several years now. And we feel like we've worked really hard to try to put ourselves in a good position to move forward. So I hope we are there.
Well, it, it, it looks very promising, Brian and Aaron and Dylan and everybody. I, I'm pleased.
Yeah, thank you. I get, with that, Mark, I'll open it up to council if they have any final questions or comments before we kind of talk about next steps moving forward here. Council?
Absolutely.
Mayor Hatch, I have a couple, just to wrap things up in a tiny little pretty bow. Buildings 27, 28, those are non-viable anymore, correct?
Correct. I understand.
We don't have a buyer?
Not one that we're going to approve.
Okay. And so then we are just left to decide concept one, two, and three. And then from the board's perspective, we got these taxable value estimates. I'm really kind of honing in on how many units we can have along with our TIF. What, what are you guys looking at in particular that I should pay more close attention to, Mark?
Well, I'm going to be honest with you. And Steve just said it, and I think what we're trying to communicate is you've got to pick the concept that really works for your area.
Right.
I am comfortable with any of the valuation estimates, okay? So when I look at the gross valuation estimate, we know there will be TIF issues. We know there will be timing issues. And we'll talk more about the specific financial implications once we settle on one. But I am comfortable personally with any of these concepts. So now it comes down to you folks getting together and thinking through what fits for your community. And again, keep in mind with any concept, there could be fluctuation within that concept. From a county standpoint, we just know that there has to be a return. The monies that we put forward, we need to get some payback over a period of time. So the Pella project is on a 15-year payback period. And that's what we're looking for here, because the county taxpayer is going to help with that acquisition and demolition component. So does that, does that, does that, does that help you? I, I just, I don't want, I do not want to put you in a box on any of these things. You, you've got to fit, you've got to think about that from the town and using these as a benchmark.
Yeah, and like Mark said, you may have to tweak any of these concepts to make it fit what you want, how you want it to look.
And we would anticipate that.
Yeah, I, I think move, go ahead, Megan.
Did I hear correctly that your preferred bond is for 15 years instead of 20?
Well, my, my preferred bond is what my, my outside expert tells me I can get the best interest rate on.
Okay. And then my last question is, you said you have plenty of time. What is plenty of time?
Well, I, I'm going to say plenty of time for us. So what, here's the timeline at broad, high level. We still have to work through our processes to even get bonds issued. That's going to take the rest of this year to get done. Then as we move towards spring, we, I would like to be in a position to start demolition. Well, if you look at the VA, just high level, Chris, tell me if I'm off, Steve, tell me if I'm off, but we're looking at a year-long project.
Oh, yeah.
Just to do that.
First of all, we got to define what the demolition is. First of all, we gotta define what the demolition is, and then we're gonna have to figure out what that number is before we can even get bonded.
Yeah, exactly. So we have a lot of legwork to work, and Brian said it, we've got agreements to put in place. So there's a lot of groundwork now to get in place over the next year to 16, 18 months. So does that help you?
Yeah, I, I think that's helpful, Mark. And Megan, if it makes you feel any better, I, I envision this over the next several months being something that council can sit down. We can have work, a few work sessions to try to walk through this, discuss the, the options moving forward, what you do like, what you don't like. Maybe Denise and Confluence are involved in those work sessions, and they can help us tweak those a little bit to come up with that one master plan that we kind of all agree on and wanna move forward with. So I, like Mark said and Steve said, I think we have several months to put this together. Not that we want to delay it. We'll get to work on it as soon as we can, but I don't want you guys to feel like you're under pressure to make a decision in the next couple of weeks. We have several months here to put a plan together, I feel.
Yeah.
I do have one question. So the county will own this ground?
Yes.
During demolish everything, when would that transfer at all? Is when the payment starts coming back? Like if they start developing? Just get clarity. I wanna make sure that we.
Well, the clarity, Keisha, that, that is up to the board supervisors.
Okay, all right.
So we can decide on that timing when, when we feel it's appropriate.
Okay, all right. And then my other comment would be, yes, I want you to, when you're talking about these concepts, wants us to look at the next 10 to 15 years, but also execution. This is.
I wanna, I wanna go back, I wanna go back on something you just said.
Okay.
Michael, if we issue bond, give me, I'll, I just popped, popped in my head, sometimes a little slow. But the transfer of deed to the city of Knoxville, eventually, the county doesn't wanna be a landowner, not, not at this parcel. The goal is eventually this goes to the city of Knoxville. But if we issue bonds on demolition, do we still have to retain control of that property? I don't wanna put any false expectations out there. Or can we issue bonds based on our balance sheet, but still eventually, on our, at our discretion, cede the property over to the city of Knoxville?
Good question.
Yeah, it's a good question. You're not necessarily financing the assets there. You're, you're basically doing infrastructure-related work, right? You're gonna be doing demolition to try to bring it down to a base value for development, right? So that's where you can potentially navigate some of those federal tax limitations on that. You, you mentioned we've got some road to hoe. A lot of that's gonna be with your bond and TIP council on, on the county side, and I would imagine the city side as well, to make sure we've got all our ducks in a row, not just for those federal tax limitations, but also just long-term TIP implications. I know we've gone through that with the county and the city of Pella project, so they can be navigated. But we just wanna make sure everybody's on the same page before we start going down that route. That being said, I, I, I think there's, you know, people are doing dirt work to get development land prepared on a regular basis. So there's an avenue there. We just make, need to make sure we're doing the, the right process steps to get there.
Got it. Thank you, Michael. So there's some flexibility now.
Thank you.
Michael, quick question while, while we've got you. To, to piggyback off of Mark's question there, my understanding has always been, and he mentioned a moment ago about brownfield, grayfield tax credits, those kinds of things. Is that what you're referring to when you say federal tax limitations and, and that? Because my, again, my understanding was that a municipality or a governmental body couldn't qualify for those on their own.
Yeah, I, I, I'm talking actually, actually, on the tax status for the, the interest on the bonds to be issued. So the, the big benefit of municipal bonds, that federal tax exemption that investors enjoy.
Yep.
And in re, re, return for that tax-exempt interest, it's a lower interest rate that the county's able to enjoy when they sell the bonds. So that's really the tax limitation there, less about the, the, the tax credit that you mentioned.
Okay, okay. So there wouldn't, again, to, to, to piggyback off of Mark's point, there wouldn't be an issue in the county potentially deeding this property over to a joint body or something like that, a nonprofit or some, some other entity to be formed in order to receive the brownfield, grayfield, any other incentive-type tax credits that might be available for a project like this?
Right. So I, I'm, I'm not a TIP attorney. I just am around enough of them every week to kind of get a little bit by osmosis. But the county's gonna wanna have to be pretty clear about what those potential avenues would be. And then we'll be able to test that out in terms of intent of what to do with the land, and then what those parameters would be if the assets that are owned currently by the county that we're working on the demolition for are then sold to various different sources. And I think, based on my understanding of the size and scale of the development area, that may be in multiple tranches, right? There, there might be a portion to one party, another to another party. There's, there's some mixing and matching potential there. So we just wanna make sure we've thought through what those ramifications would be, and, and that's where you want your tax opinion to come in.
So I, I wanna just touch on that, Dylan, since it was a little bit of a different issue. We will have future meetings, and I, I anticipate this being something we do on a quarterly basis between the city of Knoxville and Marion County to talk about a lot of those kinds of issues. So when we get to the brownfield tax credits, those things, when we get to LMI funds.
Yes.
One of the things, a very unique feature of our agreement with the city of Pella is that because the county is funding the infrastructure portion of that, we are then the recipient of those LMI funds, and we can use those anywhere in Marion County. So it's the first time in Marion County's history that the county has actually had development funds available to it, which I think is, is extremely, I think it's a whole new turning of the page. It's about $1.4 million off of that project. So we're going to want to look at some things like that as we do this, because that can also be a return to the taxpayers of Marion County as well, on, on the LMI dollars. But we'll go through all of that.
It's a lot easier to sell.
Yep, and we'll have subsequent meetings to talk about those issues. But good question, though. Excellent question. Good. Any, any, anything else from anybody?
I would just like to say that I am very excited to see the partnership. I'm excited to see the future of Knoxville.
Extremely.
I'm excited to see it for my grandkids probably more so than me, because, because I, I wasn't naive when we went into this. I knew, I knew there probably was not gonna be any return, great return in my lifetime, you know, and I'm just looking for the future of Marion County, whether I'm here or not.
Yep. I think that's great, Steve, to be forward-looking.
That's good to hear, Steve. We'll have a place for your grandkids to live. I'm not sure we take you, but we'll take you.
Fair enough.
That's good. That's good. Well, just to talk a little bit about next steps. As I said, we will work on a timeline. I've started that on my whiteboard, and we will put that into something that's actually readable, since it's all written in left-handed. Mark? But we'll put together a rough timeline to begin to talk about the steps the county has to go through. I'm going to run this, wanna run this by Jake and Michael and our bond counsel. I think that will also give you, the city of Knoxville, a little more idea of what your window is as you're operating in. And I think it's still a fairly broad window. As you look at these different concepts, as you need more information, as you, as you digest the numbers that come in. So, but we'll try to, again, we wanna be as transparent as we can with, with you folks as well as we go forward with this. It is an exciting time, but there will be a lot of details now kicking into play. There will be agreements, bonds, so all kinds of stuff. So get ready to sign stuff, lots of it. That's all I can say. But exciting time for all of us here in Marion County.
On a different note, I'd like to thank the city of Knoxville for allowing us the use of East Elementary for our temporary courthouse.
Yes.
And I, I was up to the courthouse today, and I, I would like to tell you that you guys are going to be impressed when you get in there to take a look at it. It's gonna be very nice. I'd like to thank our facilities crew.
Yeah.
They've, they've done a lot of work, but it's been, it's been a struggle, but I think it's gonna be well worth it. It's something that should've been done a long time ago. But I would like to thank you, the city of Knoxville, for the use of that facility.
Yes, echo that. Absolutely.
Thank you, guys.
Yep. Happy it worked out for you guys, and we're excited to see the courthouse. Can't wait to see it when it's finished. That'll be great.
It's impressive.
Yeah, it is.
Brian mentioned.
I think, Mark, moving forward, moving forward for us, Mark, we will obviously just keep in close contact with our schedules. As far as council, our role, we kind of get the exciting part here of getting together a few times and hashing through these concepts, and we'll try to get something nailed down with Confluence to break back to you guys on a direction that we're ready to go with in the next several months here.
Very good.
This is redundant at this point, really, but I don't, I don't think it can be said enough. Brian's already mentioned it. But this project would not be where it is, would not be viable without the partnership between the city of Knoxville and Marion County. We can't thank the three of you enough for your, for your vision and the foresight to make this what it will be. And same can be said to a degree for the Prairie Ridge development. It may not exist as it, as it eventually will without, without the partnership. So extremely appreciative and, yeah. We'll all take a little, we'll all take a little heat if we haven't already, but it is in the long-term best interests of, of the communities that we serve. And we can all be confident in that. So, thank you.
I've had this discussion with many people, and they ask what we're doing and what, what is going to be, you know, how it's going to turn out. And I said, I can't tell you how it's going to turn out. I don't know. But I do know what it's not going to be.
Exactly, exactly.
That's a great point, Steve. It's an opportunity for us to turn the page. And when you look at any of these projects, the VA or Prairie Ridge, we were not going to get any help from outside sources. And to the city of Pella, city council of Knoxville, this board, we are, we are taking that initiative upon ourselves to do this. So I, that's, that's an aggressive vision for us. And it's for the good of not just this generation, but Steve, to your point, for our future, for our future. So my compliments to all of you. With that, Brian, would you like to adjourn your council?
Yes, thank you. Mark, do we have a motion to adjourn, council?
So moved.
Oh, boy. I think, Morse, did you motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Yep.
Motion by Morse, seconded by Gata. Roll call, please.
Gata?
Yes.
Morse?
Yes.
Plum?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Sir?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We are adjourned. Mark, I'll swing it back over to you.
Great, thanks, Brian. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn from the board supervisors.
Make motion, adjourn.
Second?
McHulm?
Aye.
Raven?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Very good. Brian, I will be in touch for next meeting dates.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
You as well. Thank you.
Awesome.
Very good. Very good. Thank you.
Exciting stuff. Thank you.